Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Miami Township Board of Trustees meeting, second meeting of the month. This is the, what is this, the eighteenth? Eighteenth of April, all right, oh goodness. Thank you all for joining us. Okay, let's get started. We'll do some business here. I would entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. I so move. A second? Any further discussion regarding these minutes? Nothing jumped out at me? Me either. Thank you very much, Margaret. Hearing, no further discussion, may we vote please?
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Meecher?
Ms. Moir isn't joining us this evening. She's out of town, if anybody was concerned about her whereabouts. I now entertain a motion to remove payment bills at fifty, three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Broken down general fund, six thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. Fire fund, forty thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and seventeen cents. That's a lot of money. Cemetery, one thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. EMS billing, one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars, seventy-three cents. Road and bridge, three thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars, twenty cents. And no bond retirement this period. Is there a motion to approve these bills?
I so move.
Or some motion, is there a second? I second it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, may we vote please?
Mr. Meecher?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Correspondence this period. We have an email from the Census Bureau. We have an email from the ARPA report, which I have to follow up on, so we can get that going out. We have the Ohio Township Association Legislative Alert information for four, eight, and four fifteen. We have the Family Violence Prevention Center Spring Fling Invitation. We have NBRPC's Regional Active Transportation Plan, or TAC, planned for the May second meeting. We have requests to use the meeting room for the, why is D.C.? I'm not sure why they're asking me, probably just to keep the jam in command or something, but...
I talked to them today about it.
Oh, okay. I, my last conversation was, you know, I just needed a date and time. Request to attend the April eighteenth meeting from Cincinnati resident regarding Kingwood Solar Great Miami Bridge Riverways Springtime Activities. Green County Public Health Meeting announcement for the seventh. O.T.A. Grasslands, Colli Pings, USDA reminder of May's payment, which I hope we made.
Well, we will in May. May first, May first will utterly automatically be taken out.
Yeah. Email from Steve Wearing, who we need to discuss that later on. Twenty twenty-one raise grant application, Green County competitive, elective paving bid from an engineer, we'll probably review that. Twenty twenty-one premier health trauma annual report, we won't review that. Fund status, revenue status for April eighteenth. Any further correspondence this evening? Hearing none, we'll move along. We're going to move to the fire department to report next. As you can see, our fire chief is not here, but he did send a, he did send a report in. He says, "I spent the weekend in Nashville visiting my brother and niece and won't be back in town until this evening. My absence here is the report. There were thirty-three EMS incidents, six in Bath Township, that might be a high for a while. Ten fire incidents, four in Bath Township, and that also might be a high for a while." Incident sub notes, he says, "E eighty-two, M eighty-two, and C eighty responded to a rollover tractor-trailer crash on State Route two thirty-five, just past Byron Road. Truck went off the road, rolled over, crashing the cab, crushing the cab, and sadly killing the driver. Fairborn Fire responded as well due to jurisdictional questions, and the incident occurred just inside Fairborn city limits, so the Fairborn did handle the incidents paperwork." Tanker eighty-two and M eighty-two responded to mutual aid to Zini Township for a structure fire on sixty-eight North near Clifton Road, which sadly was a total loss. Crews assisted with extinguishing the fire. Engine eighty-two responded to mutual aid to Sealed Township for a structure fire at Dale's Auto Parts on U.S. forty-two." That's going to be quite a ways out. Crews assisted with extinguishing the fire. During the incident, engine eighty-two ran over some shrapnel at the fire location. I wonder who's driving that?
That'd be me, sir.
Hmm. Okay, those tires are pricey.
They're also fifteen years old.
They're gonna be pricey, aren't they? Dale's is a scrapyard, damaging the curb-side rear tires, that's being addressed today. Maintenance updates, he says, "Following the new tires, Medicaid two, we have more tires. Medicaid two went to Fishers and Zini for an alignment as well as replacement of ball joints." Ball joints, it's a never-ending battle, he says. Treadmill head has drive belt replaced by G and G Fitness, report briefly, and then shuts itself off at random infills, which is a real problem. This is due to a circuit board issue, and the circuit board is no longer made for the model. I have replacement, votes this afternoon or tomorrow. Everyone hopefully will take note that the lobby upgrade has been completed with the wall panels installed two weeks ago, and historical photos now of my other wall, and I think everything is very nice. You all agree? Margaret, you agree?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
I even, I even read the statements.
Excellent, good mission.
That's nice.
Your events. He notes, "We will be participating in Saturday's Bike Trail Day with Yellow Springs Police Department and others at the train station, and in Sunday's Wildflower Extravaganza here at the fire station. Firefighters Association will be again selling hot dogs during the event." He then mentions the Governor's Volunteer Fire Service Task Force. "On Thursday, Governor Dewine held a press conference at the Central Ohio Fire Museum to announce the formation of a task force on volunteer fire service issues. This task force, the brainchild of State Fire Marshal Kevin Reardon, is the first statewide effort to address and identify the crisis facing volunteer and volunteer combination fire and EMS agencies in Ohio. It is estimated that at least sixty percent of Ohioans are protected by volunteer or part-volunteer agencies, and the vast majority of these are struggling with multiple issues from recruitment to funding. Division of EMS, part of the Department of Public Safety, reports a twenty percent decline in the number of volunteer firefighters statewide over the past three years." I'm surprised it's that low. So the problem is very real, as we know, he mentions. "The task force consists of twenty-nine members from many groups, including three from the OFCA. Chief Kyle Miller from Cedarville is among them. I am happy to discuss this effort at our next meeting or individually as desired." Last but not least, he says, "The duty crew will be here this evening to join us." So that's the fire report. Any other fire discussion?
No, not other than I'm eager to hear our...
Wow. Okay, what do you, what do you propose?
If I may, if I may, real quick. The tires were fixed today on engine eighty-two. It ended up being a faulty valve stem. Apparently, the valve stem extensions attached to a braided line that brings it around for us to access, it's kind of the weak point of the whole tire. But due to the age, the outside two were replaced today, and it's going to go for getting, we're currently getting a quote to replace the remaining four.
So no shrapnel?
No shrapnel, no, it was just a bad, bad valve stem. But it completely flattened the inside, inside officer-side dual tire.
Well, in that case, we will amend the official minutes to remove the shrapnel reference.
Thank you.
Clear anybody's name who might have been involved in telling that vehicle that night. Now, did you want to move people around or not?
That's not bothering.
It's no bother, I think they are capable, but... Thank you, gentlemen, for coming this evening, appreciate it. If we don't mind, we'll go left to right, that would be...
Our left.
Your right.
We're going right to left.
And if you wouldn't mind, we'll just have a quick, brief introduction and a little something perhaps about yourself, and maybe what made you join the department way back when?
I'm Cassidy.
Hi, Cassidy.
I've worked here for three years. I also work at Harrison Township and Springfield Township. What got me into fire service is my younger brother, who also works here. In my free time, I work, one of my jobs.
For free time?
Yeah. Twenty-four, so see where, see where I end up.
Nice.
Well, we are awfully happy to have you here, Cassidy.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
Thanks.
So my name's Justin Turner, I've been here for close to three years, just a little shy of him. What got me started in the fire service? Well, I had the fire, I joined the fire service in California when I lived there, but, but I grew up in Clifton, well, I grew up going to Camp Clifton, actually, most of my childhood. So I've always been around the area, and I really enjoyed both the Clifton and the Yellow Springs communities, and so I wanted to further my EMS and fire career with this department. So I, unlike him, I don't have a whole lot of other jobs. I just volunteer for another department as needed, otherwise I'm here or I'm in Clifton remodeling my house. And I've done a lot of other things for another meaning perhaps, but I'm really happy to be here and I like to be part of this community and help out, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm Captain Nathaniel Ayers, I've been here for fourteen years now. I started here in two thousand and eight when I was eighteen. At that time, the current captain, Amy Maychak, got me in here. Wasn't really sure what I was going to do with my life. I was going to do that and just, you know, do maintenance forever over our friends. So it was kind of a fluke, I was like, all right, well, give it a shot, see how it turns out, and then fourteen years later, I'm sitting here in a captain's position as a career firefighter. So this is it, this is all I do. If I'm not here, I'm at home, hanging out with my kid. That's pretty much it, retraining my dogs. It's a boring life.
This is not all I know, he lead us.
That is true, he does lead us. Very good leader.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it, yeah.
Well, there's going to be an opening here, I think, in somewhat near future. Just checking, did I get any interest? Don, have the...
Has the fire department ever had a, a dog?
Not to my knowledge.
No, it's probably best we don't have a dog.
Not, not considered professional anymore?
No, it's just, it is, it's just we wouldn't get much show.
That's true.
I think most of us are really big dog people, so everybody in there hanging out with the dog more than anything.
I have a couple feral cats in my neighborhood, I might just drop one off.
I know a guy. I know a guy.
Yeah. Mr. Hollister?
Do you have any questions?
Sure.
You look like you'd like to answer a question.
Justin, I have a question.
Ah, go ahead, absolutely.
What do you want to do with the rest of your life?
That's a very good question. So before I became a firefighter and now paramedic, I just finished paramedic school three months ago. I spent ten years as a monk in India and Tibet and five years in a monastery. So that side of things has led me sort of here in a way, and I, to be honest with you, having invested all the time I have post-living in a monastery into the fire service and EMS service, I'm going to continue with this. I like it, it's, my mom and my grandmother and my grandparents, they were, they were all in the, they're nurses or dental assistants or worked at hospitals, so I grew up around that stuff, and, and I really enjoy helping people, and so I think that goes probably with my background, having lived in a monastery for so long.
Do you have aspirations for a, a big city department, a New York City type thing where it's just twenty-four-seven, go-go-go?
Well, I'm forty-three, not that I'm old by any means, but in the fire service, that is not spring chicken, I guess is what they say. And I really, no, to answer your question simply and directly, I don't. I like our pace, and I, I think that I can make a very good impact here with my, with living so close and with my interest in fire and EMS. I want to devote that time to this department. I like everyone I work with, ward members included, even though I haven't met all of you personally, but I love our staff and I like the community. We go on some funny runs sometimes, but I never really get really bothered by that, it's just part of our, what we do, so, no, I'm not going to go anywhere else.
You have a spouse, children, mothers, fathers, grandparents, aunts, uncles, brothers?
No children, I have a very serious girlfriend soon, possibly, there's going to be marriage in the future, on the record.
On the record, does she know about that?
She knows somewhat of us.
Okay, well, if she doesn't, she knows now, because this is all on camera, it's being broadcast nationwide.
She, there are a few, there are a few prior steps I need to take beforehand.
Yeah, I would think so, at least one.
Right, of course, of course. But no, no kids, my mom lives in Cedarville, my, I have a sister and I have a couple adopted sisters, so.
Dog cat?
I have a dog, well, I have a dog, I have a blue healer, and my, my, I love them, they're crazy and stubborn, and that's why I love them.
They're great.
And then my girlfriend, she has, well, two cats, but we adopted two rescues, so four total now.
You're gonna have an instant family, that might be.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So, yeah. That's probably about it, as far as the family is concerned, so, yeah.
Cassidy, how's your life?
I work too much.
That's probably true.
Yes. So, just going along myself for now. Still live at home with my mom, sister, and brother, the days I am old, so.
Nate, what are you doing with your spare time? I know you said not much, but let's dig a little deeper into this.
So in my spare time, I'm currently enrolled to get my bachelor's in fire administration, kind of trying to play into the future here. If he was here, I'd make a few jokes about taking his spot. So that's what I'm doing right now. I'm also in a live-fire instructor course, that's finishing up here next week, so I'll be done with that. It's pretty much, I'm kind of like a full-time student in my spare time.
Are you involved at all with the reformation of the Clifton Fire Department? Into the Clifton Training Extravaganza?
More on the prop end of things, like the training props, that's really about it. I haven't helped at all with the, with the demoing of it or the remodeling.
Any plans to get rid of which of the west's roof structure out back?
Yes, that's actually hoping, hoping to take that up to Station eighty-two, you're saying?
Okay, well, hope springs eternal, but it's, it's best to have a truck and a trailer.
That's what we have Dan for.
Well... We're gonna have to start paying taxes on that as an auxiliary structure if it doesn't go somewhere.
I'll get rid of it.
One of these days. Well, gentlemen, I appreciate you coming to see us. It's, it wouldn't be possible without you, I mean, I mean it sincerely. Even Margaret thinks so too.
I agree, absolutely.
And I have a special little treat for everybody. Cassidy, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for being with us. There's something to spend on yourself, and you're free, go ahead, do something to spend on yourself in your free time. It's in free time!
Yes.
You too?
Appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Nate? There is two. I thought there was maybe four people.
We had a little snafu, we had to schedule mishap, and we had, one of our guys had to leave to go get his kid.
Mark was coming?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
He should, he's back here on shift at seven.
Oh.
He may be, maybe we'll see the next time. I'll send him over.
We're not going anywhere. Thank you all, gentlemen, you're, thank you, you're free to go. Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Take care.
See, that didn't hurt at all. Okay, now we'll come to the public comment on agenda items. Mr. Deal, I believe this is your opportunity.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, and I will be brief, and I appreciate your allowing me to come here even though I don't live in the township or even the county. I grew up in Yellow Springs, and I work out of Clifton and Clifton Gorge State Nature Preserve, but I live in Cincinnati. My mother lives in a nursing home in Zine, so I come up here at least four days a week and, and participate in things in, in the county and in, and in the township. Just briefly, I am here to, to encourage you to reconsider your opposition to the Kingwood Solar Project. The reason I do that, and first of all, let me say, I represent no one but myself. I, I have been in touch with the company, Vesper, several times, but only to give them some information, and I, as I say, I'm not being paid by anyone, I don't represent anybody, and I just have a personal interest that goes back about thirty years in the science and the politics of climate change. And also, I have just a strong interest in protecting farmland. My families, my, my father's family, my mother's family, farmed in either Green County or Green Township in what is now Clark County from eighteen-ten to seventeen, to nineteen-eighty-two. And I've been around farms, I love farms, I know they need to be protected. However, I, I think that we also, as, as a nation, both at the federal and state and local levels, have to do what we can to provide whatever we can to minimize the, the future impacts of climate change. And the, probably the most important thing that we can do is to reduce the production of electricity and the use of fossil fuels in transportation, and thereby, through, with fossil fuels, therefore reduce the emission of carbon dioxide and other so-called greenhouse gases. And the climate scientists of the world are clamoring for action, they're saying that we are in a almost existential crisis, and that we all need to take whatever steps we can immediately. And I think that, that that thinking must apply even to local projects such as this. I've been searching for a metaphor, and I haven't come up with a really good one, but the one I have come up with is, let's imagine that there is a stretch of, of coastland that has sand dunes and other important assets, and it needs to be protected, and there's even a local plan to preserve it. Then scientists say that a tsunami is coming, it's going to hit the entire coast. In a situation like that, I think that the community must step back a bit from its plan to protect that little area of land, and to say, "We need to participate in the overall effort to protect everything else from the tsunami, and, and put up our stretch of a, of a wall in such a way that when we take it down, the, the coastal land will not be damaged, and we can then go about protecting it like we want to." And so in this case, I think that it's necessary for everyone involved to try to find a way to get this project done, which will provide one hundred and seventy megawatts of greenhouse-free electricity for like thirty-five years, and do so in such a way that the soil will be protected or even enhanced, so that when the project ends and is properly decommissioned, it could return to being protected farmland. I think that if people put their heads together, a solution can be found, but I'm concerned that people have staked out their positions already, and it's either I'm against it or I'm for it, and I, I, I think that everyone has to come together and try to find a solution that meets both the needs to protect that particular land and to provide that particular electricity. This is not the best place to site a solar farm. The best place would be for, in places that is not farmland, or even as, as Don Hollister suggested, on a brownfield land or something. But the reality is, this is the only option that is presented for southwestern Ohio right here and now, and we act, we need to act here and now. As Don has suggested, it would be best if there was a statewide planning process that could identify the best suitable places for wind and solar, but frankly, I don't think that's ever going to happen, or if it does, it will be at least a decade away, and in the meantime, we have an opportunity for, for this project to go forward. And I do think that through the proper planting and other ways that should be dead, that should be placed in writing in ways that are, that are coupled with penalties if, if these measures are not met, I think that, I think that there are ways to achieve both ends. So that's, that's why I'm, thank you very much.
Well, you're very welcome, and certainly glad that you came, and your, lack of a better word, argument is, is very strongly met in, in the area, there's no question about it. Before I turn this over to Don, because Don basically, for lack of a better word, is our representative to the, to the project as it's gone along, and I'm gonna let him address your, address your statement, but one thing is, and I, you have to know this, but the Ohio Power Siding Board is virtually at the end of their road in deciding what to do about this project. What little, and I mean little, influence townships had was, has been, is past, so I, I know what you're saying, but, and we're happy to listen, right? But there's, there is so little that we could have done, and that's already been done. So, Don, would you like to respond to Mr. Deal?
Drew and I talked at length, was it Monday or last, last week?
Friday.
What you said tonight, you may have mentioned the same thing last week, but that it may take ten years to get my dream for statewide planning, and that we gotta do something now. I can't argue with that. You know, I took an oath to obey the constitution and, but also, at least implicitly, to follow our own rules. That is, our zoning is in direct opposition to the Power Siding Board. Now, they overrule us, or may. I guess what I would take away from this is that we should look for ways to do some other things ourselves immediately, or maybe solar panels on our roof here, which I hadn't thought of until you're looking at me.
We, we requested the architect to, to, to explore that possibility, and they said that based on the amount of square feet that we have, the direction that the roof is, the prevailing cost at this, at this point, and the amount of sun that, that's generated in this area, it would not really be economically feasible for us to power our own, you know, and pay for it in a limited lifetime. So it was, it was requested.
Two of the things that you said, that there be rules for enforcing the planting that, that they speak of, and then you didn't say it this time, but I think you agreed with me in our earlier conversation, that in the decommissioning, there be clarity about enforcing.
I'd say there'd be not only clarity, but that for everything, for everything that is required to make sure that this would be done properly, that it be done, that it be placed in writing, and preferably with penalties if the company does not meet their obligations. And I fully understand, I agree with what you discussed with me before about the need to have a guaranteed funding for decommissioning, because we don't know what's going to happen with this company or other things. And so, I mean, I'm looking for two things, I'm looking for, for clarity and, and responsibility on, by the company in a, in a way that meets all of the needs that the community has to make sure this is done right, yeah.
Well, here...
And I know, and I don't speak for the company, I cannot guarantee that. I'm just saying, make your lawyers go to work and get it.
Well, the Power Siding Board similarly does not have teeth at that kind of detail. That's my impression. There will be two more days of hearing. The twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, I believe it is, of April. May not use both days, but. And the Power Siding Board continues to take written statements from anyone listening. You can go to the OPSB website, Ohio Power Siding Board. And it's a fairly user-friendly website. So it'll, it'll send you to where to leave statements.
If, Don, if you would like, I could give you the case number, because on the website, you have to, okay?
Well, they'll, they'll also take the key word, Kingwood.
Oh, okay.
But why don't you read the case number right now for?
When you go to the website for the Ohio Power Siding Board, and it gives you a space to type in the case number for the project you're interested in, this is Kingwood Solar, and it is twenty-one dash zero one one seven dash E L dash B G N. And there is a specific place for public comments, which is opposed to the actual, you know, filings by the parties to the case. But the public comments is where you can, you can enter it. And if you want, if you have something extended, you can email it to the, to the, basically the clerk's office of the Public Utility Commission with a, with a word attachment or whatever you want. And they will enter it into the public comments record the same day. Now, that doesn't guarantee that the members of the board will actually read it, but it would be on the record.
Well, we still have zoning saying it should be agricultural. And what I, what I get from your argument is that I should be pushing faster, or pushing for faster change at the state level in the state planning. So it doesn't take ten years to get a, a change. But I, this is not where I think we should have a solar array.
I understand.
There are, and you may know better, there are thirty-some pending plans. Two of, two of them, the staff have initially said, at least initially, that they don't think that they should be pursued, and this is one of them. But the Power Siding Board has to make its own decision. And they're still gathering information. But there are at least thirty coming statewide. One is in operation, and another one is finishing.
Is this the end of our discussion? I mean, I know we're supposed to spend very, a few, just a few minutes.
We're getting close to the, we're getting close to the end.
Let me just make two comments. First of all, the idea of solar panels on rooftops is a good one. But it is a thimble compared to the swimming pool of energy that would be supplied by this project. This is one hundred and seventy megawatts, which is approximately a third of a normal-sized coal plant. And this would be shipped to the, to the eastern utility grid. And would be used primarily, as I understand it, to meet the requirements that utilities have in the eastern states, that certain amount of electric, electricity be generated with solar or wind. Now, Ohio has no such requirement because of the politics of energy in the state of Ohio. But, so I think that we're, we're talking apples and oranges here. And we need, when you think of what is necessary for thousands of individuals to put their small solar panels on their roofs compared to one project right here that is, that is under, you know, great scrutiny, and the funding is available, and it's all in one site, and it's gonna be managed properly, we would hope. I think that we're looking at different things entirely. The other thing is that, is that, as Don knows, there is a, a law that was passed by the state legislature last year and signed into law by the government, which essentially provides that solar and wind projects can be blocked by county commissioners if they have previously designated certain land for protection against this sort of thing. And I think that the reality is that in most counties, that the county commissioners will act to block solar and wind projects if there's a substantial amount of local opposition for political reasons. And so, even though there are many projects that are proposed, I do not, I do not think that it is realistic to think that the board will even have jurisdiction over many of them because of what I just said. So, again, I know that this is not a, a best-case scenario. I'm just saying that the urgency of the need for large-scale solar projects, it is so important that we need to find a way to do it in a way that will not damage this farmland. And I understand that plans are important. But in this case, I personally do not know what actual physical damage would be done by this project on the land that would be used, even though it is sown as farmland. If we are at war and we need a new Coast Guard station, or if we need something else to go on to meet a national or international crisis, I think that the fact that we have a plan for normal times should not be a reason to cite something which is in response to an emergency. And that's how I view this. So thank, thank you very much. I appreciate your letting me address you tonight.
Thank you, Drew.
Are you?
I'll, I'll stay in touch.
You good with where we are?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to, to listen to more of our
I think I will. I'm interested in local government. You, you people actually do something. As opposed to other people sitting around and talking about what other people should do.
Yes, we have cemeteries, we have rural roads.
Yes.
And rural zoning.
I took care of a cemetery and a church, so I, I'm interested in that.
Professor Ackley?
Well, thank you for putting me on the agenda. I've got three copies here, so I'll leave one for Margaret. Sorry, not Margaret, Marilyn. As usual, I took your renewal and I put it out for bid with the other companies once we got everybody filled out an form by her. Just, just to remind, I think you guys have been through it so much, and I think danger on the plan, if I remember. So I think Mar, Margaret's on it, but just remind everybody, we, we have kind of a hybrid plan. We have, we have a high deductible insurance plan that we buy from the insurance company to cover catastrophic losses. And then we self-insure the deductible portion for the employees so that they don't have to come up with that high deductible. And the township shares that, that deductible cost with them. So, we're gonna go through both parts of that again real quickly here. The second page in on your hand out there shows you just a snapshot of where we're at on the Anthem High Deductible Plan. And it'll show you your current plan at the top, and then right below that is the renewal plan. And if you look at it, just real quickly going across there, you'll see the plans are identical to last year. So nothing's changed, other than in the prescription area. And a lot of times, the insurance companies will tweak those plans, and they'll go from a thirty-five-hundred deductible to a thirty-seven-hundred deductible, or they'll go from a thirty-dollar copay to a thirty-five-dollar copay, whatever. But they haven't done that this year, everything's pretty much stayed the same. Other than the prescriptions, they've tweaked those numbers a little bit. Again, there's, there's, Anthem is staying with its Level One and Level Two prescription plans. And just as a reminder what that is, that's the preferred prescription companies are preferred pharmacies and the non-preferred pharmacies. And I'll tell you real, real quickly, the, the non-preferred pharmacies are Walgreens and Rite Aid. They don't, they don't wanna play with Anthem, they won't sign contracts with them. So they put them under the Level Two, second-tier pharmacies and pretty much everybody else, Kroger, CVS, Walmart, Target. Everybody else is up in the, the Level One pharmacy. So, the employees can go anyplace they wanna go, but if they use the Level One pharmacies, it's a little bit less expensive for them to get their prescriptions filled than it is if they use a Level Two pharmacy. So, that's the difference on that. Bottom line, rate-wise, last year, if you remember, we had about a three percent increase in premiums. Medical inflation ended up last year being about seven percent. So, you know, we didn't even quite stay level with inflation rates last year at the increase that we had. This year, they're taking a nine percent increase. And projections are to be about six and a half percent medical inflation rate this year. So, we're just trending pretty much with what medical inflation rates are going to have. It's kind of a sad commentary on our healthcare system that the rates have gotten this far outlying, but that's, that's where they're at. And you'll see on the next couple pages where we've compared that to shop and see. The third page, the next page after that, kinda gives you a quick summary of who's on the plan. And Anthem does their rates not based upon age and gender. They do a, a single-family, two-party, and an employee spouse rate. So, that's what you're seeing. It doesn't matter if your employee is twenty years old or fifty years old, their, their single employee is gonna be the same rate. That, that total number on there, this, if you see up at the top of that page that you're looking at, it says this data is current as of twelve twenty-seven. That was when they started processing all these renewals, was right at the end of December. And since that time, you've taken on a new employee, Mr. Klein, so he's not on there. So, I have added his rate onto the total cost on the next page where I put together a spreadsheet. If you flip over to the next page after that, you'll see there's a spreadsheet comparing various insurance company quotes that I've run. And the total underneath that first column with Anthem is nine thousand dollars. That does reflect Mr. Klein and that member.
You know, Steve, I, I look at the fifth page with the, the people who are on the plan, and it just makes me remind me that when Margaret and I started, other than her and I, there were two people, total, on, on the township.
And the rates were probably
Oh, don't even, don't even get there. Yes, sir.
But on that next page, there were the spreadsheet there. We, we put it out with all the big, the bigger carriers in the area, Medical Mutual, United Healthcare, Aetna, off quarter on it. We went with a couple, one, one smaller carrier, Mid-America, and then one mid-sized carrier, Allstate. And so those, those are the rates that are showing there. And just, it's not hard to see if you go down to the bottom that, that Anthem's still pretty competitive compared to what everybody else is quoting us. So, my recommendation is that we stay with Anthem for another year. If the rates continue to go up, we may wanna look at going to a higher deductible with Anthem and self-insuring even more, a greater portion of that because your claim results have been really good on the self-funded part of it. So, I don't think
Do you have that in here? Is that in here?
No, yeah, the claim, the claims part of it is in here, yeah. I didn't show you any higher, higher deductible numbers this year, but the claims portion. And then if you go over to that next section after the gray divider, that gets into the, the self-insuring part of it. And the company that we use to self-fund all that, to administer all that is ClaimLinks down in Cincinnati. And this is actually just a copy of the brochure that they put out that we can hand out to all the employees, which, Margaret, you may wanna put that in the back of your mind, that if, for new employees coming in, this is a nice brochure to hand out to them to try to explain or let them understand how ClaimLinks works. What they do for the, the, the back half of that brochure gives a summary of all the benefits and what, you know, what their actual cost is, like a two-fifty deductible rather than thirty-five-hundred deductible and so on. So that's all on there. We can make those available if you all have them.
I, I don't like to confuse them, I might clear myself on ClaimLinks, I know I pay them, but I
Okay, yeah, I can, I can get those to you. And then if you go back to the, I guess it'd be about the third page after that, that gray divider, is the special prescription plan that we have for the Medicare carbo people. So for the, I think it's primarily the trustees that are on the overage sixty-five plan. If you guys get to choose whatever prescription company you want every year during open enrollment season. But of the, most, the majority of the prescription plans have a pretty good deductible on four hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, whatever. So, the township said, we wanna make the prescription benefits comparable for the trustees as they are for the active employees. So, the township self-funds a portion of that prescription coverage as well. So, that's what that, that third page shows you, is your, your copays for your prescriptions. And that basically offsets your deductibles that you have through whatever party prescription that you choose. And then the following page is the one that Chris was asking about as far as the claims that were paid. This, when I, when I asked them to run a claim check board, I have to give them a, you know, a time period to run the claims. And so, I ran these from August thirtieth of twenty-one to August, I'm sorry. Ran this for a twelve-month period, I don't think they have the date on there, but. Yeah, they didn't put the date on it. I, I ran it from April, April thirtieth, I think it was, of last year to April thirtieth of this year. I believe is the way we ran that, or April first, maybe it was. But anyway, that shows you what you, you had about seventy-nine hundred dollars worth of claims that got turned in to ClaimLinks. And then of that seventy-nine hundred dollars, the township paid about five hundred and fifty-eight dollars of that. So, that, that helped to self-fund that, that thirty-five-hundred deductible that, that the employees incurred, so to offset that deductible form.
Isn't the seventy-nine hundred substantially higher than it had been in the past?
No, we've had, we've had some times where it's been up around twelve dollars a year. Last year, it was, it was comparable to that, the year before that, two years ago, it was up around twelve-five.
Again, I'm, I've been thinking of some old, old data, as it were, old data.
And, you know, and a lot of that is not payable because it's, it's gonna be copays. You know, like if you go on an office visit and somebody gets charged maybe a hundred dollars, and, and it ends up being a thirty-dollar copay, then you guys will have to pay the seventy dollars. So that's why, out of the seventy-nine hundred that gets turned in, like five hundred and fifty-eight if it actually had ended up being paid. Plus a part of that is paid out, shared on an eighty-twenty basis. Once that two-fifty deductible was done, the employee pays forty percent, the township pays the eighty percent, so.
Are we still in, happy with ClaimLinks? Have we ever been happy with ClaimLinks?
Well, yeah, that's a good question. There's not very many, we don't have a lot of choices. There, there's not very many companies that do this on a small group basis like this. Now, actually, one of the quotes that I gave you that Mid-America Associates, they are one of the largest third-party administrators in the United States. And they actually have a fully funded insurance plan that they put together through their administrator, it's out of Chicago. And that was who I'd asked to quote on it, then you tried to quote on it. But there's not very many companies that'll quote eight or ten employees and do the type of planning that we're doing here where they're partially self-funding that, because there's not much money in there, they get paid, you know, per claims if they process them like that, and there's just not a lot of that here, so. So to answer your question, yeah, ClaimLinks is still about the best we can get for, for what we're doing. And then the last page in there is just a quick summary of your, your dental plan that you're offering to, to everyone, and nothing has changed on that. you're offering to, to everyone and nothing has changed on that. Medical Mutual of Ohio, which is out of the Cleveland area, they bought Superior Dental last year, but nothing changed. They're allowing Superior Dental to continue to operate under their own name and entity and so on, and they chose not to increase any rates or change any benefits. So literally dental plans, things like dental, what it was last year, cost-wise and impact
Any questions, Don?
Nope.
Well, in that case, I didn't take a motion to renew the contract with Ackley Insurance for the, for the Anthem coverage that we now currently have and then would continue to have.
I so will.
Okay. Motion, I will second it and for the discussion regarding that. I mean, we both please.
Mr. Mutcher?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Well, Stephen, thank you again for your work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.